It's called the December 12, 2018 Heinsburg Planning Commission Meeting Order. So first agenda item is Agenda Changes. Anyone have Agenda Changes for the night? Alex, thank you for adding those couple bullets for me. Um, next segment of business, Public Comments for Non-Agenda Items. I assume everybody in the audience is here for an agenda item. If that's not true, please speak up. All right, as I thought. So let's move on to number three, Official Map Revisions. Public Comments and Questions. I think we're gonna get some public comments and questions tonight. Alex, I don't know if you have anything before we open it up to those in attendance, and I think we can do that first, and we can do written correspondence after.
Yeah, that makes sense. Just want to recognize that there was quite a lot of written correspondence, and I've been trying to feed it to you in the lead-up to this meeting. So once the folks here have had a chance to speak, we probably oughta just formally recognize each of the correspondences. We can do that after, like you said, Joe.
All right, so what I would ask is that if you do have a comment, you know, please don't cut in on someone else, but when you, you know, when there's a free spot, please announce your name. Let us know so we can record it. And, uh, you know, please give us your comment.
And there is a sign-up sheet. If you haven't signed up, please do so. You can do it on your way out if you like.
Please. You don't need to, small room.
Greetings. I'm Dawn Francis, and I live on Butternut Lane in Heinsburg. Longtime Heinsburg resident. Think I know many of you around the table. At first and foremost, want to thank you for your service. I was a planning commissioner back in either the late 70s or early 80s. I know how difficult this job is. It's cold, you come out on a winter night. Leave your family, that's time you're never gonna get back, I assure you. And most importantly is, you have to navigate just opposing viewpoints. It's really hard to do that, so thank you for what you do. Just some very short comments, kinda summarizing a post that I made in Front Porch Forum, and a couple of emails. I think most recently Ralph and I had a dialogue this morning on email, and that is in your packet tonight. So I kinda wanted to summarize all those different points, and I'll take it from there. So my comments are offered based on my experience as a former planning commissioner here for Heinsburg, my professional work. And most importantly is someone who really cares about this community and its future affordability. Back when Commerce Park was going through the design stage, town officials, including the planning commission, were really trying to get commercial investment in town. We didn't have a pharmacy, we didn't have a bakery, we didn't have a hardware store, and all of these other services that we now enjoy. We were excited when Drews wanted to invest in and risk their hard-earned dollars by developing Commerce Park. So I find it a little ironic that we're having a debate today about a lot that's always been planned for a commercial use. So I think the issue of whether or not we should have a public facility on Lot 15, on the official map, which is on Commerce Street, in Commerce Park, really comes down to four main issues, as I see it. How we should prioritize our limited resources, thereby more wisely spending taxpayer dollars, preserving and maximizing future options for commercial investment in Heinsburg to create synergies with other uses in the area, determining what the most compatible land use is for Commerce Park and Lot 15, and then acceptance that the prospective developer of this lot has generously offered a public park and space for a farmer's market. And I believe that meets the spirit and intent of the existing official map. As you know, it currently lacks specificity in terms of what a public use should be, but they've offered a couple different public facilities, and I think that at least is a good step forward. So just real briefly, in terms of the prioritization of resources, throughout my career in local government, I've always had to balance a lack of resources in terms of time, money, people, and land by prioritizing what's most important, and where do you get the biggest bang for the buck. I don't think a public park or facility in Commerce Street is a wise use of public money. And then under the topic of maximizing land uses and future options, I believe the most compatible use, given the availability of infrastructure and the surrounding land uses to Lot 15, is as a commercial use, given that it's the only vacant commercially-zoned parcel in our community that can accommodate more than 20,000 square feet in size for retail use. And then the third point, in terms of how we determine what the most compatible land use should be, regardless of whether it's a Hannafords or some other commercial use, if Hannafords doesn't go forward, this parcel of land is a potential revenue generator, and it's not just property taxes. Would provide economic benefits such as jobs, important services. It adds to our limited tax base, tax revenues from the state in terms of payroll taxes and sales taxes, and it provides an anchor for our village center. My understanding is it used to be a village center and recognized by the state as such. That is a huge benefit for anybody wanting to invest in that particular area of the community. My understanding is that if you are in a designated village center, you don't have to go through the Act 250 process, correct, Alex?
No, that's not correct, but you do benefit from certain tax incentives.
Okay, all right. It used to be that way, interesting.
It may be, depending on legislation this next year.
Okay. So in sum, I respectfully request that the commission actually think about removing Lot 15 entirely from the official map as a public facility to maximize its commercial potential. Or alternatively, at least have it reflect the public amenities, including a park, paths, and a farmer's market that were offered by the prospective developers of this parcel. And then getting off Lot 15 in terms of another area that is near and dear to my heart, because I travel there all the time, and that's up at the corner of North Road and Richmond Road, where the Mobile Home Park is. That's a huge population density, and there are people that walk from that area down to the village all the time. And I'm glad to see you've got plans for a future sidewalk there, but I also think there should be some type of neighborhood park there in support of those folks, 'cause a lot of those kids can't afford cars to drive down to the village. And I'd like to see us maybe put a public park up there. So bottom line is, we've got dwindling resources, not a lot of capacity to pay. If we were to put a public park in this particular area, it would require operations and maintenance money, more staffing. So I think we've got to think about what it might cost versus something that might bring in some additional revenues to the town. And I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for your well-worded comments. I appreciate those. Two things, if I could. First one concerning North Road.
Yep.
For this round of the official map, and actually the last round when we, when we put this together originally in 2008, 2009, we were concentrating on the village. The board has recognized that in the future we need to expand the official map for a number of reasons to a larger, you know, town focus. So I think that will be something that the board looks at in the future. The other thing I'll just note, I know you're in favor of the farmer's market. I can understand why. I just want to be clear that the way that the proposal was made before, that farmer's market right could be, well, it's not a right. It was a privilege, it could be taken away at the discretion of the grocery store if it wasn't used for a certain amount of time. So not, not your typical, you know, municipal infrastructure or, you know, resource.
And that probably is something that could be addressed via conditions in a future, either appeal process or application process. We could require the dedication of it.
I just wanted to be straightforward, and that's, you know, that's the way it looks on paper today.
Yep. Okay. And then related to looking outside of the village, the intersection of North Road and...
Very bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, in fact, I think, I think we spent more than a couple minutes talking about that last meeting.
Yep.
We, it was actually a couple meetings ago, for those of...
Is it, if you clarify, North Road and...
North Road and Richmond Road.
Texas Hill Road.
Near the Texas Hill Road intersection as well. And there was, I think, a couple meetings ago that the commission talked about, should we designate a future park up there? And I actually, I think we all feel like one is not, one would be warranted, same as you. I recommended not doing it in this round of the official map, because although the, many town officials have talked about it, we've never actually looked to see where's the most appropriate location for it. And when we put things on an official map, we are identifying a location. Interestingly, Mike Bissonette, who many of you know, was poking me for ideas for the Regional Planning Commission's work plan for next year. He's one of our representatives to the Regional Planning Commission. And he suggested that the Richmond Road, North Road intersection ought to be fixed, so it's safer, and maybe converted. And my thought was perhaps just a simple four-way intersection, doesn't require a whole lot of work, just take that sweeping curve out. And in the process of thinking about that, it seems like there might be enough room in, in the land that would become available for some kind of neighborhood park. So I, I think that's a great idea, and I think we oughta look at it. But the prior conversation was sort of like, well, but we don't know exactly where we, which parcel we would call out. And maybe we don't have to. Maybe it could be in that mass of road intersections if we just cleaned it up and simplified it.
Yep, good idea. So again, thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? Sure someone does.
I don't have any more. I don't mark. And I like to say, Dawn, I don't have a Chamber of Commerce background in business and packed on economy, but I certainly read things in the Planning Zoning Office files, that studies that indicated there's a lot of factors and variabilities, ambiguities about what certain businesses will be of value and not to a community. But what I want to talk about, I think geographically speaking, that Dawn had some good points about there being a logical spot for some commercial activity on Lot 15. And, but what is ignored is, I think, the most important lesson we've learned in the last few years in dealing with this recent application of Hannafords. And, and, and it could be applicant X, big corporation X. It could be Hannafords again down the line, it could be some other corporation. But what, what I've learned, and I think a lot of people have, is they have endless resources to bring in all kinds of experts and, and challenge, inability and resource to challenge our ordinances, laws, decisions. And, and because of the RGH frankly, challenge, the legal challenge, the experts particularly they brought in, what opened my eyes is that the paid experts of these applicants, and I'm not talking about the mom and pop things, the things we normally deal with at DRB, but this large, very large developers, they, they can bring in experts who, they don't need to lie, they, they present facts, but sources, the validity of sources vary. And they can, as important as what they don't say, as to what they do. And what I've learned from listening to the countervailing experts is that there are bitter sources, and there are issues that they don't address, and that they didn't address in this case. And the town has very limited resources to, on their own, to, to get their own experts. I mean, they didn't. They relied entirely on RGH on their experts. And it was because of them, this organization, that Hannafords was ultimately defeated at this level. And I think for, and for good reason. And what I think was ignored in the previous comments is, the reason is not that it was geographically inappropriate as a commercial center, is because of the impact on our natural resources, stormwater, first of all, the traffic issue. And for that reason, I think we need to be very careful in looking forward in our zoning of this lot, that we don't have to face this kind of threat again, because next time, we probably won't have an RGH to defend the town. And this could go on another few years if this, if we do have to go through the entire appeal process.
I understand your comments. I know, you know, I know your arguments. I do want to bring us back to the official map, though. It provides some history here. You know, the official map comes out of statute, you know, 10 years ago, before there was a Hannafords proposal, before there was an RGH, right? Planning Commission at that time used a new state statute to put a map together, considering, you know, what the town facilities, you know, needed to be five years, 10 years, 20 years out, right? Had nothing to do with a particular, you know, grocery chain wanting to come to town. It was unknown at that time, right? I think the official map still needs to be that way. It needs to be about what the town needs, right, for future infrastructure. And I, that's, that's really its purpose, not to, not to provide a weapon, right, to use against development that we, you know, may disagree with. I understand their arguments for that, but that's really the mission of the official map.
Okay, but, and just to clarify what you're saying, Joe, I mean, I would assume, to add to what your comment, that the job of the OM is to describe what the town needs, but in doing so, it also needs to describe what it doesn't need.
No, I think there are other places in zoning for describing, for prescribing exactly what the town wants.
Okay, all right. But if I'm off, if I'm off subject, I apologize.
Well, I, I just, you know, I, I want, I know there's, there's a lot of members of the public here who, you know, have heard about the official map lately, right? Maybe don't know all the history behind, you know, when the official map, you know, became a thing that we could actually work with, what it was intended to do, how it works. And, and I just need to be very clear that it wasn't put together as a, you know, as an argument against a particular development. It was before that, it's for a specific purpose. It, it tries to, you know, anticipate the needs of the town way out in time so that development, whatever it is, does not fill space that we think we're gonna need in the future, but haven't quite funded and built yet.
Well, if you're saying my comment is anyway critical of what you did in the past, they weren't intended. I'm just speaking for the future.
Got a question and a comment, Dan Ofton. Question, when Lot 15 was remarked as a future community area, how was that, how did that process happen? And was the Drew family part of that process?
So it happened in this room. It happened through a, a number of meetings and public hearings. Is any, you know, you know, any draft legisla, I call it legislation, but draft proposals that the, the planning commission comes up with, goes through a process before the select board and is approved. And that happened, you know, 2008, 2009.
Yeah, Dan, I don't, I don't, I don't recall... I don't recall much involvement by the Drew family at that time. And I will tell you that we're, there was some criticism at that time as to the level of direct outreach that we did to affected landowners, and pledges were made, "We'll do it better next time." We followed all the statutory requirements, don't get me wrong, but we'll do a better job. And we're seeking to do that this time. Individual landowners have been notified, and Steve Drew, for example, came to one of a previous meetings to, to speak a little bit. What I would say is that, I was telling Marie this earlier today, that the, the history of the official map is interesting in that when the planning commission back in 2007 or so looked at the previous town plan from 2005, which said, "Grow the village", and they proposed a very ambitious growth plan, doubled the size of the village, added these new zoning districts. The first proposal that went to the select board was sent back to the planning commission, and the select board said, "This is a very ambitious plan for growth, but you haven't talked about where we're gonna have future town facilities. We're not willing to adopt this big vision without those facilities being shown." And so essentially, what the select board said was, "Give us an official map." And so, planning commission took it back. There was a small committee forum, George Bedard, and I think two other planning commissioners were on that. And we worked together to come up with an official map proposal so that the next time it went to the select board, it was both a zoning expansion together with this official map. So that's just a little bit of the back-and-forth history of it.
And my comment, there's been a lot of press, literally, about Lot 15 being a unique opportunity for community space and everything. My comment is Lot 1 isn't highlighted in that same color because it's already owned by the town, from what I understand. And it's, does that make it technically not a future community space? I'm trying to, I feel like...
Dan's referring to this lot behind the police and fire station, which we often refer to as Lot 1 because that was the numbering of the lot when the Creekside project was built. And then the town was given that property.
I guess I'm curious how that, how should that really be designated? Or is it properly designated right now on the, on the map?
Yeah. I mean, my, my take on, on the official map and why it's different is this. Is if I, if I look at the official map statute, the way I understand it is, right, it, you know, it instructs the planning commission, right, to put together siding for future, you know, future uses for the, for the municipality, right, so that that can be considered in zoning, right, or in subdivision when a proposal comes, to make sure that the town can still provide that service, or there's a mechanism to, you know, either have the town acquire the property or give up its right to consider that as part of the zoning process. That's not, that's not a flow that a piece of property already in the town's ownership is gonna go through. There is no subdivision, there is no proposal for, you know, development, residential, commercial, et cetera, right? This is really a mechanism to put areas on the map where we believe we need infrastructure. It doesn't mean we're gonna buy those properties today. It doesn't mean we're gonna buy them 10 years from now. It just says, "We think we're gonna need infrastructure here at some point." If someone in the interim, right, proposes development, we have now the official map that, ah, we think we're gonna need, you know, infrastructure here. The way the official map process works, if the development is compatible with that needed infrastructure, there's no impediment before the DRB, right? If there is a conflict between the two, what the statute says is the DRB is, is going to, you know, not approve the development based on the official map. That's gonna kick off a time period where the town has the ability to, you know, work with the landowner to try and come to some agreement, probably purchase. Yeah. Yep. And, and, and so you know what happens if, if substantial progress is not made within, you know, that time period.
Right.
Right? Right? Development proposal, you know, gets to come back to the DRB without consideration of the official map at that point. So it's a, it's a set time limit, right? After development is proposed, right, for the town to really act on its interest. Please.
Yeah, so I think, though, even further, the answer to Dan's question is, Lot 1 is already show, it's been, it's, doesn't need that process, like Joe said, but it are, is being shown as existing public land.
Right. But if I'm, if I'm an average town person, I look at this map. I'm not seeing Lot 1 as a future community space. It's basically my comment, and I think it's an important future community space.
And, and it's interesting that it's the only publicly-owned parcel on the extent of this map that isn't labeled.
Yeah.
All the other ones are, you know, are something, and therefore are labeled as to what that something is, whether it's a cemetery, or Deprags, or whatever. And we, we didn't label that. We could label it police station, fire station, and future, you know, and green space, future to be determined, or, or something like that. It, I agree with Dan, it seems like we kind of, or maybe I, I as the mapmaker kind of overlooked it as a way to explain what, what's there.
The commission can date that, you don't need to date that.
It's good, though, to see it in its entirety.
Yeah.
You know, in a document like this, maybe the colors of what the town owns ought to be more emphatic than what's indicated on this map. I think that, it gives you a good sense, you know? When you look at a diagram like this, okay, what, what, what are those resources that we have for a variety of different purposes? And to see them in their entirety is, is useful graphically, I think, so.
Well, and I think what, what should happen, and I don't think we fully realize this, is that the town plan should include a facilities map, it does actually, that gives the community an idea of where current facilities are. And we kind of look to the official map to say where future facilities would be, but as Joe said, it doesn't really apply to land that we already own. So there, there is a little bit of a gap there in terms of being clear about plans we may have for existing municipal properties that we don't really put much detail on in the official map and maybe aren't reflected in the town plan in a substantive way. I've, Dan and I have talked, so I, I know his perspective, and, and I understand, and I share, the desire to see Lot 1 behind the police and fire station become something more than what it is right now, more than just a mowed grassy lawn.
I don't know what is proposed as a, as a layperson here. I don't know what is proposed for Lot 15, if the town does take over Lot 15. But what I see happening in the future is that the west side of 116 is gonna become very populated. Why not have, you know, are you gonna have a playground there? In that ugly place? Or, you know, it's not a, it's just not a beautiful lot for someone to go and sit in the park. Are you gonna have a playground there? Are you gonna have all those children coming across 116? It just doesn't make any sense to me for it to be a public place. It doesn't seem, unless you've got an idea for it, I guess.
And for Kate, and for Kate's benefit, you are...
What? Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen didn't. I'm sorry. I also see that our town library is evolving as a community center. I'm a senior citizen. I go there for lots of senior citizens and things. I'm a grandmother, we go there all the time with grandchildren. Maybe we should be thinking of more up in that area. You know, could we have it connect with Deprags Park? Could, you know, that, we own the, the town owns the Heinsburg Resource Center, that building there. Then there's the library, you know, could it? It just, Lot 15 does not make any sense to me to be a public park.
Right. Boy, lots of things there to comment on. The first one regarding the library, we do, on the official map, we do put extra connections up to Deprags. Regarding the, the development on the west, no. We don't expect everybody to cross the street all the time and go to a park. There is also green space marked out on the west side of 116.
It's up on screen if they wanna... This is 116 to Orient U.
Yeah.
And this is Mechanicsville Road. And Lot 15 is E on the map. And there's the Bissonette Rec area, and green, future community facilities A, B, and C are the, are the places denoted... A, B, and C are the, are the places denoted for future things on that area.
So if you have it on what, on the west side of 116, why would we take, take away our, a commercial lot to have it there on the, the east side? It doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, so, so here's-
Okay.
Okay. So, so let me, let me try and answer. I don't know if I'll be, I'll do this adequately or not, but as the sole person on the planning commission who was here in, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, I will try. At the same time, um, that we were working on the official map, as Alex noted, we were working on rezoning. And we did a number of things. We created Village Northeast, right? That's where NRG is, et cetera. We created Village Northwest. It's being built out now. We also created a lot more residential opportunity up Mechanicsville Road in what we call Residential 1. So there will be population growth along Mechanicsville Road. And there al- already is a fair amount of residential, uh, you know, use in that area. We have Thistle Hill. We have some apartment buildings, uh, that are there already. Um, there is population center to use a park on that side of the village.
Yeah. I mean, the bulk of the population of this town lives east of 116, you know? In fact, probably some of the most concentrated areas are right up the Richmond Road, um, towards Texas Hill. And, um, I think it's useful to see this map, Kathy, you know, in the context of the entire area that's zoned as village. And then when you start to go to the geographic center of that village, um, you start to see perhaps what the rationale was back in two thousand, two thousand seven or whatever it was, of why that lot perhaps was designated for that particular purpose. You know, we're seeing the northern portion here, but if you look at the entire area that's zoned as the village district, uh, I think the rationale perhaps becomes more apparent.
Although Ralph, it's interesting, in the original official map, this was a key community facility location. In this proposed revision, we've added a bunch of new ones, right? So we've added D, which is that hillside above NRG where the red chair is. Um, and we've added G as sort of a organizing community place, uh, for what Joe was describing as a, what could be a fairly substantial build out of residential use along Mechanicsville Road. So I don't know if, in the process of sprinkling more of these on the official map, the importance of E as a central one has, if it's the same as it was in the original official map, you know, uh, especially given that, uh, as Dan was mentioning, Lot 1 is right here, which from a, you know, central standpoint, it's same, same latitude.
What's the acreage of Lot 1 left over after the buildings have been-
Yeah. It was originally 1.85 acres, but we paved a road through a portion of it because Act 250 required us to for the new police station. It's about an acre of, in that square that's remaining to be used. Whereas Lot 15 is 4.6 acres. So it's a much larger parcel. However, Lot 1, behind the police station, no encumbrances, no site constraints. Lot 15, heavily constrained by wetlands. So the, you know, there's different pros and cons to those two particular places.
Okay. I, 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 I know that, that many of you have multiple comments. I'd like to make sure I hear from everybody who wants to speak at least once. Johanna?
Hi, Johanna White. And I did serve on the planning commission when the official map was conceived and studied. Um, what, one of the things that, what we looked at was what was still undeveloped, what had not been used. And this particular lot had been visited by, um, I don't know how many exactly, but we'll say two to three businesses, uh, the, um-
It was an energy, energy proposal.
Veterinary thing, NRG looked for, looked at it. And, and this was, the problem with the lot was that in NRG, for instance, found that they had to drill down 80 feet before they reached, um, firm enough ground to, to build on. So they walked away. Fortunately, we did something wonderful and put them up on the hill. Um, the other thing was, and the reason for that great boring down was the wetland that is there, which, um, which we've done quite a bit of studying on this, I belong now to NRG and, um, have since I left the planning commission. Um, the, we had no knowledge as, as you pointed out, Joe, that there was a, anybody interested in it at all when we put that map on, we put that piece on the map. Um, when we looked, took, looked at it, at, at its location, we thought, well, this might make a, a really good place for the town to have extra space, one way or another. Um, so, so, uh, my, our, our concern always has been the wetland. It still is very much a concern to us. And, um, we hope that that can be left of its own. If there's other development to go on that piece of property, that's not yet been decided. That is not up to us. That is up to the town. And, um, I, but, but we do, we do, and that piece may not look so appealing right now, but it has no trees on it, has no, no one's ever done anything with it to make it look more inviting. But there, you know, as I said, we, we don't have any say as to how it's developed. Our concern is the wetland, very much so. Thank you.
Before I take you, Don, let me just make sure that, that there are no other people who want to speak for the first time. I think there are, so. Gentlemen, third, third row, middle?
Okay. My, my name's Dave Blanc. And, uh, just a couple of things. Um, with Lot 15, it seems like it is in a commercial district. And if it can, it, it sounds like with Hannaford's, um, engineering studies, they feel they could build on it. Not saying that Hannaford's is the place that, or the business that should belong there, but it sounds like it could be built on. Um, it is in the commercial district. It seems like that would be a good use for that area. The, we now have the Bisnet Rec fields. We also have Lyman Field. We have a soccer field back here that I'm not sure how much that really needs to be used. With the other facilities we have, with, uh, elementary school, their, their land gets a little wet sometimes, but so does this. Whether the building, um, that would be associated with a town, whether a possible place for that would be out here rather than, uh, structure over on Lot 15. Just, just an idea. Um, if you're looking for a park like Crystal or Richmond, uh, whether Lot 1 could be used, whether that road could be moved further to the south to allow more green space in one unit, you know, whether that's an option. I never, I didn't understand that it was for an Act 250 reason why the road was put through there. I always wondered that, it seemed like it'd be great if you could get rid of that road, but it sounds like that's not an option. But whether you could move it further to the south or one end of the property or another, you know, have that combined parking between the fire and the police and have a different location for the road. But, you know, he puts a, put in a pavilion, grow some trees, that could be a park that's very close to the center of town. Uh, and the, another thing would be, uh, working towards accomplishing the community plan before development occurs. So try to purchase the land if you want a hundred foot corridor on the west side of 116, purchase it before the development occurs. Now, so try to do these things proactively rather than waiting until someone comes and says, I'd like to do this. And then you say, well, you know, that, that's good, but we would like you to do this first. And then you're, and it's almost, uh, holding their feet to the fire to do something for you so that you'll let them do the building. And that doesn't seem like a fair way to treat developers or to treat someone, you know, not that I'm a fan of all the things they do, but I think it would be good to do these things proactively. Uh, one last thing, and just to think about lighting in the future. You know, recently there was a man killed in Waduski crossing at night, dark clothes, hit by a car. And, you know, we do, you know, we don't have a lot of lighting on our, some of our, uh, not centrally located roads in Heinsburg. So just to be, just to keep that in mind, make sure we can try to keep things safe for people that are out on the side, out on the sidewalks and the bike paths at night. So, and again, thank you, as Don says, for your service and your time. You know, we all appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Mark Hindrass, um, and I just wanted to speak in support of the park for the Lot 15 site. Um, I'm a parent of young kids and at the moment, we spend a lot of time driving to Richmond, going to their playground, hanging out there, spending our dollars in that town. Um, and as Heinsburg, Heinsburg residents, we'd love to be able to do that here in town, have a playground close by, um, or a park space. And to me, that Lot 15 location seems like a really prime and perfect spot for that, that's central to a lot of resident areas. Um, so I just wanted to put my two cents in on that and of course, to thank all of you for all your work and planning. I don't necessarily have the benefit of all the historical context and I will freely admit to knowing very little about the laws and ordinances, et cetera, regarding that particular piece of land. But, um, just as a parent of young kids who love spending time in Heinsburg and would like to have a good excuse to spend more, I think the Lot 15 place for a community park would be an excellent selection. And so I'd like to see that on the town plan map.
Gentlemen, I think you had a, you had your hand raised.
My name's Peter Moadley. I live on Spencer Hill Road, which is up off Texas Hill. And I wanted to say that I think that the municipal use of Lot 15 is, was a good idea from the beginning. It's fairly centrally located. It would allow the park that this gentleman is talking about, but it would allow a controlled modulation of what goes on to Lot 15, whether it be municipal buildings or park space or some other limited, uh, development that would still respect the wetlands and would not attract, uh, uh, traffic to such a huge extent that, uh, alternative big box development would. It, it seems to make much more sense to go with the, what I think is the original plan. And, uh, and I must confess that, you know, we're not regulating to regulate against something. I think we would, should be regulating, regulating in favor of what is the best use. And, uh, but in my heart of hearts, I'd have to say, that would take away a terrible, uh, alternative use. Because when I, I'm a geographer by, uh, by training and, uh, my master's degree is in that. And there are things that we all know, they're sort of like watersheds. When you have a commercial facility, you have a drawing shed. And when you're the only big box grocery south of Taff Corners or the Shelburne Road developments, you are going to become the center for the spin that runs from South Richmond through Huntington, through Starkspur, through Moncton, through Charlotte into North Ferrisburg, some of South Shelburne. It's all going to be most convenient to come to a big box here. And so we're going to have all of those towns going through our traffic lights and parking and trying to thread through Commerce Street. If we build something that attracts everybody and their brother, if you have a low turnover of parking situation, I think we would be in much better shape. And I also think that we really should respect those, those wetlands. And so I go with the original intent of, of municipal use. And jumping to another subject, since I live up past Texas Hill, the idea of some better development of that North Road, Texas Hill and Richmond Road intersection would be safer. Uh, that's, you know, you can darn near, I tell all my guests, the, uh, North Road has it right away. Don't, don't jump it. It's not a four-way stop. And, uh, people come out on those Y intersections and they don't look over their shoulder hard enough. And so there's, there are problems there. A park would be lovely, but there's one other use that's going on informally up there that I think is a good one. It's sort of a reverse park and ride. In the triangle there, you'll see cars parked all the time and you, you know why they're there, particularly in the winter, is because people who can't get up Texas Hill, uh, have guys like me with studded tires and Subarus come down and get guests, my neighbor's guest, my neighbor's babysitter, the appliance man who fixed my stove. I all show down there and get them and they park there. And I see this going on. I'm not the only one by any means. So we're using this as a reverse park and ride. And it would be good to have at least sort of five spaces of parking plowed out all where, uh, to, uh, near that intersection because Texas Hill is probably the most challenging, um, town road. And off Texas Hill are some of the most absolutely challenging private roads. So people like to abandon their cars down there and come on up. It also is the last sweet spot for cell reception where you can talk to your guest. And once you come up Texas Hill, you go into the dead zone and you can't, you can't say, I'm at the base of Beaver Pond because there is no, there's no cellphone reception at the base of Beaver Pond. So, end of a long speech, but I, I do support the Lot 15 as originally, I think, well-considered use and also revealing my bias, a blockage of an abomination.
Thank you for your comments. I had not thought about the reverse park and ride use, but that seems very important.
Peter's not the only one that has told me that. So I think that's, that's pretty common.
My name's Mary Lee. Um, I hadn't planned to say anything. I just was really interested in what you're doing now with the official map. And, um, but I do want to say, I think it's very important to protect the wetlands. And I'm not sure if everybody's aware that the DRB denied Hannaford's application because of stormwater issues, because they felt that they did not meet the Vermont regulations for stormwater.
Right. Anyone else have a first comment before I go back to Don? All right, Don?
So just a couple of comments. My understanding is the reason why we're looking at the official map again is because there are changing conditions. Um, this community's grown. There's been a variety of applications that have come forward. There's more housing development in this area. Um, there are now more public spaces or opportunities for public spaces. So it's great. We're taking another look at it. Some of those changing conditions that should be considered are Hannaford's, and I'm, again, I'm not here to advocate for Hannaford's. It was granted a state and Army Corps of Engineers wetlands permit. It's an extremely onerous process. So that should be taken into consideration. They've proved that they can meet the wetlands. And I think that they originally got a stormwater permit for their old application, right?
Yes, they have a, they have a stormwater permit. It's under appeal, but they do have one. Yep.
So they have those permits in hand, all right? That's a changed condition. They've proven it. Um, Heinsburg's always been a subregional center. Charlotte, Huntington, Richmond, uh, Moncton, Starkspur. We've always been a subregional center. CBU attracts a lot of traffic. And people often come to our restaurants or our grocery store on their way out of town after picking up their kid from soccer practice. We've always historically been a subregional center. Um, there are more parks developed and available. Um, another changing condition is the fact that we no longer have the church as a farmer's market. So we need that space somewhere. Hannaford's offered that space near Lot 15. Um, we also can require as part of future development approvals, for example, with Haystack, and you've got that on your map, um, you can require these developers to actually pay- you've got that on your map, um, you can require these developers to actually pay for those open spaces in park development as part of a development approval for 400 or 500 housing units. So, that is a changed condition, which makes more sense for the park to be there near residential area than it does surrounded by a commercial area. And finally, this little hill, yes, it's a residential area that's close to Lot 15, but it has access to all the Russell Trails and back and that's a very important, thankfully, the Russells and other property owners have allowed people to have pedestrian easements throughout that property. So, there are public spaces for people to use.
So, thank you again. I, I do agree with, with a lot of what you said and certainly the Russell property is a gem. Um, we're very lucky. It's a town in the village to have that. I, I would, I would never talk down that, that piece of property. It's absolutely incredible. But if, if you're trying to bring a child to play on a swing set, um, that's not the place. So, yeah, each, each one of these, these municipal uses should have some, you know, different amenities, qualities to it to serve, you know, the, the public as a whole. That's, that's the only comment I, I had. Other comments?
Bill?
Uh, Bill Markes. Um, my first question, kind of basic, I should probably know the answer, but does the official map have to follow property lines or can you, um, can you delineate areas within a lot to, for?
You can, you can and we, and we have. It's hard to see it on the screen, but, uh, these areas, B, C, G up here on the Quinn property, those are all portions of a larger parcel.
So, I think it's Joe White, I think, it may have indicated in her comments that you could take the, the additional wetlands studies that have come out of the litigation, they're more precise and actually, and I know they would be available and, or are, and could use those to delineate areas within Lot 15 as not appropriate for, you know, including whatever buffers is, or is part of any commercial development or any, or any other.
Again, I, I think that there, there are other zoning bylaws that would, would, you know, tell developers how far they have to be, you know, from open waters, et cetera.
Okay.
That's really not the place of the official map.
Okay, all right. I, I don't know. Um, the, the other thing is, I guess my comment part is, and I think Don raised an interesting question about the permits and, and as you all know, the, under the, the last decision, a first big, uh, Hanaford's relied on the original permit and the, um, towns and our GH's position, they were, they are required to comply with the new stormwater regulations, which they did not apply for. And the, the only testimony that I heard from their expert was that he didn't know if they were qualifying. But, um, again, my experience, and it's not just this, but in dealing with, and I bring up Vermont Gas because we dealt with the agency of natural resources there. And one thing I learned is that as a town, we need to watch after, um, our own butts. We cannot rely on state agencies. They don't have sometimes political will, they don't have manpower. And I say this from experience because I know from the case of the pipeline, the A&amp;R, which granted Vermont Gas approval, um, to trench through Geprac Park based on the pipeline's own studies by the professional wetland people, that there was a minimal wetland where they were planning on trenching. Well, it just turned out that we had a uncertified wetland expert on our conservation commission who walked in and said, "Hey, this is all wetland and this is prime weather and this is not, not compromised wetland like the lower field, but this is prime, um, virgin." And, and let me just say, that was what, that was what we had to, you know, pay out of our own pockets for a certified expert. But that is what, um, brought them back is we had, we pointed out to A&amp;R because my point is A&amp;R.
Get your point. But it really doesn't pertain to the official map and, you know, and it's, it's pure essence, right? The official map is about protecting our butt. It's about protecting, right, the town's ability to, to anticipate in sight, you know, municipal services and amenities out into the future, five, 10, 20 years from now, right? And that's, that's watching our butt, figuring, you know, trying to, trying to anticipate what we need and plan for it.
Right. And we have to count on ourselves to protect this. That's, that's my line. So, what you're doing is important.
Other comments? Mary Lee?
I have a question. So, um, if, if you decide theoretically that, that section marked E, Lot 15 should be a park, it's owned by the Giro Trust, so then, do you tell them that or, and they have to comply? How does that work?
So, so the official map process, right? And, and this, this is already ongoing in, you know, in, in Lot 15. If development is proposed, right, comes before the DRB, right? The DRB looks at where the development is. If, if that piece of property is on the official map as, as having a, a future community, you know, facility on it, right? The DRB has to consider, right, the official map as part of its review process. The DRB has to make a decision. Is the proposed use compatible with the, the official map or is it in conflict with the official map? If it's compatible with the official map, the DRB can rule on the development, right, based on other merits, right? The two are compatible, if the development is approved, both can be satisfied. It doesn't mean that the developer has to, right, implement whatever community facility was on the map. He just has to make space for it or, you know, make it available. This isn't, this isn't a tool to, to force the developer to do something. It's a tool to, to make sure that the town has the space. If on the other hand, the DRB says, "Your proposed development is in conflict with the official map, not compatible to have your use and the use that the town envisages on there," the DRB should, right, um, on the basis of the official map, deny the application, right? At that point, there is a time period that's kicked off. I believe it's 120 days, right? The town has the responsibility during that 120 days and, you know, I should say, I don't know that this has ever been tested in court. When the 120 days kicks in, we don't, what, you know, what the wording I'm going to use next means, et cetera. But the town has 120 days to make substantial progress, right, in basically purchasing the land, right? Or, or somehow coming to an agreement with a landowner and the, the developer, right? If they're not in good faith, if we as a town decide that, you know, we don't want to go through that process, we don't want to spend the money, you know? After that time period, the developer gets to bring his application back to the DRB. And if there were no other reasons for denial before the DRB, right, they would get their application heard without regard to the official map. Right? So, in other words, if development's proposed and the town doesn't take significant action, right, to, you know, purchase the land, come to some easement agreement, whatever, right? The developer gets to come back before the board, get his application approved, notwithstanding the official map. If there were other reasons for denial, whatever it was, stormwater, traffic, you know, yada, 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 those things still stand. Those things need to be mitigated, but they can always come back at a later date, right? And the official map would not be a point of contention.
So, Joe, what happens when the DRB denies the applicant at the same time for reasons for both not complying with the official map and for other reasons?
That one needs to be tested in court.
Okay.
I'm not an attorney. I don't pretend to be an attorney. I'm not going to tell you what takes precedence, right? That's for court.
Is there a reason you wouldn't proactively try to purchase this, these properties to do what the town's plans?
Well, I mean, there, there are, there are multiple reasons. I mean, one is that we're not flush with cash. I think that one's fairly obvious. Two, the official map, um, really looks out in the future, five, 10, 20, even, even more years. Tries to project. I don't know that you would buy all the properties that you think you were going to need in, in 20 years. And, you know, if I'm honest about it as well, and, and this happens in some circumstances, things just naturally fit together. For instance, on the official map, we called out roads in the village northwest. Doesn't mean that every road is on the map, but the roads that we as a town think we have an interest in, right, to further the connectivity, right? Would we buy those rights away to ensure that those roads are there? No. It's in the mutual interest of the developer to put those roads in. They certainly need to get ingress and egress from the property. We're just telling them as part of the map, "Hey, we think it's important for connectivity that we have a, we have a road that goes from here to there." So, we wouldn't want to buy property in, in that, you know, circumstance.
It's not entirely black or white, David. It's, it's a, you know, there's shades of gray. I'm sure there, there could be some elements on an official map that the community should be putting aside money for and talking to the landowner and seeking to purchase because we are 100% sure of what's going to happen there and we know that we are the responsible party. And then there are others that are, "Well, maybe, but not quite." And then, as Joe said, there are others that are, "Well, we think that we need this space, but maybe in 15 years, when the landowner decides to do something, they'll have a better idea of how it's going to integrate and we'll work together to modify that." And if we'd already purchased some slice of it, then that flexibility goes out the window.
Yeah. Certainly, certainly some of your, some of your comments ring true, you know? If, if not buying the property, at least having a fund to buy property. I think that became apparent to the board, a little more history here. So, we put the official map together and, you know, I think it was approved 2009. Later, the Hanaford proposal came to be, uh, went before the DRB. Obviously, we had the official map in at that time. The board at that time did not feel that the, uh, community services, uh, proposed by Hanaford met the requirements of the official map. Uh, one of the reasons for that was that it was ephemeral. Um, if it wasn't used for a certain amount of time, it went away and that's not really my definition of a, of a community resource. The DRB approved nonetheless. They thought it was. That's the right. Following up on that, there was an Act 250 hearing. I personally testified at that Act 250 hearing, making the argument that this did not fulfill, right, the intent of the official map. One of the things the Act 250 commission said was, "Really, you don't have a fund to purchase this land, therefore you must not be serious." I can understand the argument. That's not really in the statute, so I disagree with it, but I think it would help the town to have such a fund in the future.
Other comments? All right? Thank you, everyone. Certainly, if, if you have more comments, if you think of things outside the meeting, please, 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 um, send an email. The one thing I would request, I, I know there's, I know there's been a lot of emails, not only to Alex, but to, to planning commission members, and I understand why that happens. Certainly, you want to communicate with all us, all of us, and I appreciate that. And, um, that, that seems like the right thing to do. However, as a board, uh, planning commission especially, uh, we are beholden to open meeting laws. So, we should not be having kind of ex parte communications by email, especially when it's going back and forth from commissioner to commissioner and, and townspeople. I prefer that all the emails kind of come into the town. Right now, the best way to do that is to send them to Alex. He'll get them to all of us. And that way, everything will be above board, you know? Everything will be out in the open, it'll be recallable out in the future, um, you know, open, open records. So, would really appreciate that.
Just as an aside, you folks should have a town email address, just for that very reason.
I totally agree in, in.
Because you're, you're pretty vulnerable if you don't.
Because of the conversation today, I actually sent an email to Renee saying, "You know, we're kind of encouraging this by having our personal email." And it's been noted.
Yeah, great, thanks.
So, do you want me to just walk through the written comments for the record so Kate can just note who had, who submitted written comments? Hold on just a moment. So, I won't go through all the comments that, um, that, that you've heard at prior meetings, but the comments that have come in most recently, most of which are related to this Lot 15 question, um, are from, of course, I have last names, Steve Barnard, uh, who was writing to concur with Don's points that she laid out. Let's see here. Lenore Budd, who also had similar comments about Lot 15. Paul Lamberson echoing those comments again. Don Francis, for the record, had several communications, but she was here tonight to speak to those. Linda Parent submitted comments, um, again, saying she's not in support of, of the town taking Lot 15. Jennifer and Louis Prue, uh, similar comments about, uh, Lot 15 and not wanting it to be on the official map. And, let's see. Udi Tally, who had submitted previous comments about the Farmall Drive connection, but also had comments on Lot 15.
I'd like to apologize for butchering her names several times. I appreciate that she put the phonetic helpers in her, in her email.
Sylvie Vedreen, um, same, similar comments about, um, the town shouldn't be taking Lot Charlene Van Sleet, also another comment agreeing with, uh, Don's comments from Front Porch Forum. I think I might be getting to the end of them.
There's three more.
Nancy Dunlop, also saying that Lot 15 should remain a commercial space. Tom Giroux, who I saw here tonight but didn't speak, um, agreeing with Don's, uh, position on Lot 15. Matthew Mason, um, also agreeing with Don's points about Lot 15 being for commercial space. And Sally Kimball.
Seems like we got one more tonight.
Yeah, Paul Emerson.
Yeah, I had mentioned Paul, uh, along the way. I think that was it. We, actually, we did receive one comment unrelated to Lot 15 shortly after your last meeting, but Kyle Bostwick was at your last meeting and I think he went home that night and, and emailed me and said, "Here's a couple other thoughts. These are related to, uh, trail connections within the Farmall Drive neighborhood."
Are those, all those comments up on the, in Dropbox?
Yes. Yep. And I had, uh, hard copy packets here that Lenore was nice enough to put together. So, if you want a hard copy, they're, they're, the ones on the table actually are just the Lot 15 packet. So, the ones you've heard previously and Kyle's comment about Creekside are not in that paper packet.
So, I think there was one more, Alex. There was an email from Andrew Frost tonight at 5:27.
That one I did not see.
Okay. So, we want to enter that one in as well and it, it, it's basically in, in support of, um, um, taking Lot 15 off the map. So, um, I don't know, if you were to open your email, you would, you would see that.
I will forward that to the rest of the commission, um, tomorrow.
So, and just for the record, uh, you know, I, I read through a, a number of these emails and, and I think, I think many of them were, you know, heartfelt and, and, and reasoned to some extent. There was some mention of eminent domain and, and I'd like to just say again. There was some mention of eminent domain and, and I'd like to just say again, you know, for the record in front of the cameras, this is not eminent domain. This, my view of this is actually anti-eminent domain. It's a, it's a prescribed process and it's a very short duration and it's really in the town's onus to, to do something, uh, rather than, you know, uh, the town inflicting its will arbitrarily and, and, uh, without recourse. So.
So, what do you want to do with all this? Um, and Joe, you can cut me off because I know we're over time on this agenda item, but, uh, I had promised you some, some, uh, a, a new version of the official map showing all the changes you wanted to see made to date. I, I apologize. I did not get that done. But, given all of the comments tonight and the written comments, which frankly are, that's more volume of public comments than I've seen on something in a while. Do you want to, do you want to talk more about this in January and, and finalize the official map then? Do you want to make some, give me some direction tonight as to what to do with Lot 15 in particular?
Alex, with me being on the DRB, I mean, now that it's already been voted on, I should be able to comment on all of it, right?
I think so, yeah. I don't, I don't think these discussions are, are pertinent to Haniford. Any changes to the official map won't have any bearing on their application or their appeal process. So, although we're talking about Lot 15 and that's where that project is proposed, I don't think these conversations are relevant to the project. And yeah, it's not in your hands anymore anyhow.
Okay. Well, I just don't understand. The town really wants a park. Why we're not doing anything with Lot 1? We've already, we had a developer willing to pay money toward it. And the select board said, no, I don't, I don't understand that. And also, you guys also wrote a letter to the Development Review Board.
We did.
Saying, I mean, maybe you guys can clarify it, that the area identified for the farmer's market is too small and the location of this community facility is unsuitable. So, because there wasn't sidewalks and public roads, I didn't understand that part because, are you saying that where the farmer's market on that lot wasn't suitable? Or the whole lot is not suitable?
Well, it.
You know what I mean? I don't, I don't think.
It's where.
If you only meant a certain spot, you probably shouldn't have written that top line.
They, what they meant was where it was proposed, not, in fact, uh.
Within the site plan.
Okay, but.
Yeah, Jeff French was, who's not here tonight, was one commissioner who said very clearly, I, I, he said, I, I could see this happening somewhere else on the lot and, and probably could be a good thing. It's just that where they proposed it, at the back end of the building, near the dumpsters, overlooking the automotion backyard and all that, didn't seem like it was connected or.
Sidewalk and roads to that area, though.
Well, not on the site plan. There's just the driveway through the site to get to it and, and there.
So where was it gonna be a better spot?
So I don't think that, I don't think the commission was gonna design it in that way, but I think, I'm speaking for Jeff.
I just didn't know if they meant the whole lot really.
No, definitely not. Uh, it, it was, it was meant to, that, that particular spot was.
So maybe on the official map, maybe we shouldn't color in the whole area.
Well, I will say that when we first started talking about this for these revisions, I said, hey, the Lot 15 committee did all that work. It showed there are some developable and some undevelopable parts of the, of Lot 15. Maybe you want to identify a chunk of it as a future community facility, but the commission talked and said, no, I think the whole thing makes sense.
Same, you know, plan that, that was put out, Mike Butcher, I mean, really, really showed a, a, you know, kind of, a, a complete use of that property. Some, some, some building infrastructure, some, you know, pathway through wetland, you know, et cetera, that would, you know, basically make a complimentary space.
I mean, I think going forward, what we're doing is definitely a lot better. I think a lot of it wasn't, wasn't specific enough.
That was, that was another one of the issues before.
In the beginning.
Yeah.
But now we're talking to landowners. I mean.
Well, we have this.
We've learned from this.
We're trying to do better. Going with the map, explaining exactly what's envisioned for each of these A, B, C, D, E, F, Gs.
We're, we're trying to learn, Dennis. We screwed up the first time. We're trying to learn. But your question is. As the sole person who was here at that time, I'll take that.
But your question was, why aren't we doing anything with Lot 1? I, I don't think that's a question for this commission as much as it is a question for the select board, um, you know.
Well, I would think it'd be a question for the public if we did go and buy Lot 15.
Well.
When we haven't done anything with Lot 1.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, think, thinking back to 2008, 2009, Lot 1 was a thing then, and, and we did discuss it. And, you know, we heard, we heard varying opinions on this. And, you know, one of the things that, that I remember, right, my brain cells are dying, but, um, was a, an issue with, with Lot 1 in that, you know, if we wanted a ban shell or something like that, um, Route 116 was a problem. Noise on Route 116 was a problem. And that further isolation from 116, but still something in the village area, right, would be preferable for that sort of use. So, that, that was one reason for Lot 15. The other reason is what I said earlier in the meeting tonight. We were, we were designating, you know, both area on the east side of town and the west side of the town for additional development, higher density, right? And we certainly had some ideas about parks on the west side of the road. Lot 1, the rec fields, et cetera, right? But we felt we needed something closer to the east side of town as well, right? Just as I wouldn't expect all the kids to, you know, go across 116 west to east. I don't expect them to go west, you know, east to west. It's not that I don't want that crossing to be safe, right? But, um, you know, I just think for, for community, you know, it, it's better to have resources on both sides of the major road in town.
It also seems that, um, you know, taking the large, broader look at the, uh, you know, at the village center, that the, um, the location of Lot 15 being equidistant between the two schools, was part of this discussion, as far as I recall.
I do remember Rolf, who just walked out, uh, talking about and actually showing some, I think, measurements of the distance from CBU to that and from the community school. And it, it is very central, uh, for sure. Although, as I pointed out, um, earlier, the, 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 the official map we did prior didn't anticipate, um, G on the map. Right? This, this wasn't there.
That's true. That's an addition.
Now we're saying, this is gonna be such a big neighborhood, it deserves to have some sort of community facility in it with various types of uses. So, I, I mean, I think you could make the argument that we've got a town cemetery, which is a beautiful place to walk. We have the, we have a proposal for a future, uh, park-like space in G. Perhaps the east side of the community is served and E is, is E still necessary, you know, given that we have Lot 1 close by?
It's true, but I, but I would also say that for many families, E is, is, um, much more walkable.
Sure.
You don't have the, the, um, incline that you're gonna have up to, up to G. And as Mark pointed out, we still don't have that kind of playground. I, you know, I, I, I know the one you're, you're speaking of in Richmond and, um, you know, looking for a flat, um, walkable within the village center.
You don't have a playground at elementary school?
What about the elementary school?
We, we do, but it's.
It's not usable many, many times of the day, many parts of the year.
Yeah, the, 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 the beef that I've heard over the years is that we don't have a playground suitable for younger children that's available when school's in session, because when school's in session, those playgrounds are not accessible to, you know, the, the dad who has a three-year-old and isn't in school. And so that's why on Lot 1, we had as part of the master plan for that lot, what was called a tot lot, uh, which was meant to be a young child's playground that was gonna be close to the police station and be fenced and, and it, you know, benefit from adjacent parking and other municipal uses and that sort of thing.
I, I guess the things that I'd point out in, in, in whether, whether G is, is really, you know, replacing E are two things. One, you know, what's the residential density that we're expecting, right, with, with residential 1, et cetera? In, in, you know, Thistle Hill, et cetera, et cetera. And, and, you know, is, is, is that the right amount of space? Just G for, for that amount of density? The other thing is, is there, you know, is there complimentary service here where, that we need, or is there duplication of service? When we talked about, you know, G, right, you know, we, we talked about a, you know, per, perhaps a picnic shelter or, or something like that, tables. When we talk about E, what have we talked about? We've talked about walkways. We've talked about some built infrastructure, perhaps town offices or, or et cetera, et cetera. Very different than, than what is defined, right, on top of the, you know, Quinn property. So, I, I don't believe it's duplication here, right? I believe it's envisioning, you know, two different types of amenities that the town is gonna need in the future.
Want another monkey wrench, though?
The town would never be able to afford the stormwater on E.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, so, so the other monkey wrench, though, is, is what's been mentioned about the fire department.
Smartly designed, right? I mean, if, if you're not impinging on, on the wetlands that are already there, right, how much stormwater do you actually, you know, need beyond that? I don't know the answer to it. But, but when you're not bulldozing the whole lot, I think the answer is different than if you're bulldozing the whole lot.
Yeah, there's certainly an apples-to-apples comparison. You know, a, a, a 36,000 square foot building plus the associated parking is, is a much larger footprint than anything that the Lot 15 committee suggested with regard to municipal building. But the monkey wrench I wanted to point out is that, um, this is the police station. This is the fire station. Lot 1 sits behind them. As Dave Blanc mentioned, we've sort of, we chopped up Lot 1 a little bit when we put the connector road in. But there's still quite a lot of space left there to do something positive with. But there's, there's currently discussion about, and I know it's not final or anything, but there is currently discussion about the fire station possibly moving from where it's located now to Commerce Park, to where Tailhook Towing is located. If that were to happen, the area that the town already owns on, that, that's adjacent to Lot 1, where the fire sta, the existing fire station is, would become available for potentially the facilities that were discussed on Lot 15 by the Lot 15 committee. You know, a built, a place to have a building. So, I, I, you, you can tell a little bit of my slant here. I, I, I am somewhat swayed by some of the comments that have been coming in about Lot 15, but mostly I just see Lot 1 as a huge opportunity that we're just not doing much with at the moment.
I, I underst, I, I understand. I, I mean, I, I think, I think some of those arguments are, are cogent, right? But at the same time, I, I, you know, I have to go back to my comment about the official map saying, the, the, the official map is, is, is not the tool, right, for me to, to, you know, designate land that the town already owns, right, and prescribe something for it because that's not the mechanism that the official map enables.
But it, but it has to consider it.
That tells you you shouldn't need another one right next to it.
Right. And what we have today could have should inform what we want.
Because I'm guessing that was.
Right.
Was that on the official map at one time before it got donated?
Lot 1?
Hmm, that's a good question. I think it had been donated when the first official map was created.
But it probably would have been on it, maybe. I don't know.
I don't know either.
I'll tell you what, I'd take a different slant on this than just sort of the specifics of particular pieces of property. I'd take a holistic view, not that we aren't collectively, of the entirety of the village district, you know, and I.
I just, I mean, that map illustrates it, but it's much simpler to be a little more emphatic, you know. Draw a black line around the village district. And then start adding up the amount of public space that's dedicated within that village district. And by my calculation, just my eye, it's extremely modest, you know? It's no central park, I'll tell you. And when all of that. When all of that gets built out, when the northwest, northeast, uh, that district over here, there is gonna be some thank yous going around, um, for the increased amount of public, publicly dedicated land that this official map is the vehicle for. In fact, I think it's still grossly inadequate, you know, in terms of what's potential, um, exists for growth in the village in the next 50 years. It's not adequate, uh, by my measure. And you can talk about individual parcels, but, um, you know, it'd be interesting to do an area calculation of this and just to see how much. And granted, um, some of what the town owns is currently muted and you can have discussions about school property, say, for example, and how they function, but they are specific and dedicated purposes, you know, that differ from the overall well-being of what we're trying to anticipate the public in this community is gonna need. And it's not just serving those people that live within the confines of that black line. It's serving the entire town. So, I, I would draw a perspective, which I think the official map certainly tries to do, uh, that, that pulls back a little bit from, um, you know, some of the small, uh, what looked to me as pretty small little parcels of property, and look at a bigger picture.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned 50 years. I mean, Joe, you talked about looking ahead 5, 10, even 20 years, but, um, we do need to lift our eyes up a bit and look, look, I think, a, a bit further down the road. And, um, we have no idea what, um, what things are gonna look like. We have no idea, um, how this, I mean, that's what we're doing, planning how the town grows, but in terms of population in the county as a whole, we, we have no idea what's gonna happen and, you know.
No idea, but, I mean, we do, we do at the same time know that we have, we, we have zoned aggressively, you know, for, for build-out.
Exactly.
Assuming there are no other barriers, we're gonna, we're gonna have a lot more people in this village.
Right. And, and, I, you know, I, looking at, at today, I, I can understand 100% what, what folks in the audience were saying. But I can't think of a single town that, uh, has ever regretted setting aside too much green space.
Yeah, I think so. And, you know, in, 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 in the event you, you did regret it, right? You can do something about that. If, if you, if you regret in the opposite direction, then, you know, you can't do anything about it.
I don't think they're saying that we don't want to set aside green space. They just don't want to set aside right there.
Yes. We got that.
And they, I don't think they're against that. It's where it is.
I mean, the, the, I mean, you know, I get, I get that that's the single piece of property that can, you know, by zoning, take a, take a huge building. Alright, unless you knock something else down in, in Commerce Park, which things happen, right? But, you know, there, there are a lot more commercial opportunities in this town than there were when, when, you know, uh, Commerce Drive was created. I, I know you're giving me the face mury, but we created Village Northeast and Village Northwest, for gosh sakes, you know?
Extents, I mean, we doubled, basically, the commercial opportunities that exist in this town.
More than doubled.
I mean, you have.
But if we grow by the amount of people that you're saying are, are residents.
Okay, we might, we might need.
We might need, oh, the commercial stuff because people want to go to things that are in their town.
Agreed. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's why, that's why we did mixed use in Village Northwest. Now you could, now you can argue about whether we need more area for, you know, a, a larger cap or not. And, and, and boy, that one, that one will be a great conversation in town. I don't really want to go there tonight. I mean.
But we know this area can be developed. We don't know if those other areas can.
We know that those are, we know that this area can what? I'm sorry, I missed.
We know this one has allocations and all that. We do not know on the rest of the properties. We don't know if that, that will ever come out.
allocations in terms of.
He's talking about sewer infrastructure.
We don't know if that will ever come about.
Well.
I don't think, do we?
Yeah, it's an interesting.
Not really.
It's an interesting question because in, in some instances, we say, and the Water Waste War Allocation Committee has been talking about this, we want to, we want to prioritize use of that limited resource. in the village core so as not to leapfrog over and have islands of development. And I think that's part of what Dennis is saying. We don't know that the Village Northwest is gonna build out the way that we that the way the developer or or this official map anticipates. Um if it doesn't, do we want to sacrifice the ability to have com- commerce in Lot Fifteen? Which is a centrally located, walkable uh space.
So I'm, you know, I I as I, as I'm sitting here, I I'm listening to comments around the board and I think they're all all heartfelt. Um and what occurs to me is, I think we're very dissonant in our opinions. We we have at least two camps and probably more uh around this table. Um and it kinda feels like punting the ball, but I'd really like to have nine members around this board table um to discuss and 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 come to some final decision about what we're doing with this map and this piece of property.
That is very difficult to make happen as it seems there's always one or two people that can't make it to any given meeting, but
I understand.
If we call that out, perhaps your first meeting in January, everyone can commit to.
I would, I would very much like that to happen. I think this is a full board thing.
And can I just ask a question? I know I haven't been here. Have we asked, have we talked to any landowners? Have we had any? Has that been going well or?
So everyone got mail, uh and some of them got that plus email. Uh the only landowners that I've actually spoken to um are John Mead for the Hart Mead Property and um Barb Lyman for the Lyman Property, although that was a very brief non-substantive conversation, but we did talk.
Did you share that with us?
No, cause it was non-substantive. It was, it was more, you know, I want more information, please send it to me, and I did. I I think that's it, Dennis. No, I haven't had
Nothing with G or anything?
I haven't had sit downs with um with the executor of the Quinn estate, uh I haven't had a I I've had email exchanges with um Jan Blumstrom and um Ben Avery, who's the principal at Black Rock for the Haystack Crossing property, but
Concerning this?
Yeah, but but I haven't, but I haven't gotten any feedback back from them. It's, it's just been me reaching out to them, so yeah, not a lot of like good one-on-one discussions.
Some people have been here, I think, Steve Drew.
Steve Drew did come to one of your meetings, that's true.
But he said it was hard to speak for his family. He was just speaking
Right, it's a, it's in a trust and there are two branches of the family and um, yeah. So Joe, this sounds like you wanna table this to the January meeting.
I would, I would like the full complement of board here. Yes, I I think it's important that we have nine people here, the first meeting in January.
I'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Encourage folks to come.
I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but I I think it also gives time for everybody to, you know, take one more read through the prodigious amount of uh email that we've received. We we received five X more email than in this, in this last two week period than we did in the, you know, couple months before, and maybe we'll get more. So. Alright, so Alex, uh our agenda item number four, village area public open space design standards, it sounds like not a, not a lot of uh progress has been made. You're still not ready to bring that back?
Well, actually, that one's a little different. Um I thought we were wrapping that up last time and John Kadash um felt like maybe we should do some more objective research on the square footage numbers. Uh so, so I put John in touch with Jen McEwen, our rec coordinator, and I believe the two of them are are researching that and and he's gonna wrap me in when he's, when that's done, but so, so that little side research project isn't complete yet. Um but one thing I said I would do or we could do tonight is walk through some um existing development examples and apply the the design standard requirements to them to see, you know, uh how they would have fared. And so I I did do a bit of that.
Okay.
We can take that up in January too, if you wanna, if you wanna press on due to time. Again, I think both of these, I I don't know how the commission feels, but I feel like both of these deserve to be in the same package of changes that you go to public hearing on and eventually submit to the select board. They're very intertwined. So if you're gonna delay a bit on the official map, you know, this can ride along with it. Or if you want, I can walk you through some of these examples tonight.
I mean, I would, you know, I would like to, you know, keep this, keep this meeting to around nine PM if I could for obvious reasons. Um so I don't wanna spend a lot of time here. Um I think we will have a fairly full agenda next time if we discuss the official map again and and do this, but perhaps no more than we had tonight. So I don't know, how's the rest of the board feel?
About diving into the
Diving in tonight, hearing some of it, or
Wouldn't hurt to take a look at a little bit.
Well, we can, we can spend, so we probably, we've probably got about five to ten minutes worth of other stuff um to discuss, but we can spend twenty, twenty-five minutes.
It probably won't take that long, actually. When I finally sat down to do the the analysis, it was, it was fairly straightforward and I think the
Okay.
The message that I am taking from it is is fairly straightforward. So let me just bring up the GIS so you can see on screen th- these areas that I looked at. Okay, so I'm gonna zoom in. This is Heinsberg. I'm gonna zoom into uh the Village Growth Area on the right there. Still hard to see, I'll zoom in some more. Um Mostly, I was looking at e- existing neighborhoods that were of some magnitude so as to trigger these these public open space design standards that you've been talking about. So the first one I looked at was um the Creekside Neighborhood on Farmall Drive. And I'll zoom into that a bit more. So this is a neighborhood of thirty-seven homes and um per these design standards, oh, and no commercial space. When this project was originally done, it was fully residential. Uh and so per these design standards, it's two hundred square feet per dwelling unit, per home. So thirty-seven times two hundred is seventy-four hundred square feet of public open space is what the reg- the your proposed regulations would require. How much did this project actually uh produce? Um in terms of actual land area, Lot One that we've spent a lot of time talking about tonight is really what it produced. Um the town was given this property, Lot One, and also Lot Thirty-One, but but Lot Thirty-One was a very encumbered property. We had Grand Designs do a soccer field on it and then it turned out that um the prior converted wetland status uh didn't mean anything and and what we thought was possible was no longer. So per your, your proposed regulations, areas like this that are encumbered with wetlands and flood hazard area don't, can't count towards the required public open space. So really, it's just this slice. The project also created, you know, this small center area and also this area, although it wasn't, it wasn't prohibited from future development. But those were never made available to the public, whereas this one was donated. So um
So do people have access to that one in the back?
This one here?
No.
This one here?
That one.
That, that's land that that reverted to private ownership.
Right, this is not in public ownership and
In other words, they have nothing, other than Lot One.
They bought the land.
They bought that one.
Yeah.
Public, it's not specifically
Right, so, so this neighbor, these neighbors who live here have been using this property. And the developer Brett Grabowski, in his next phase, is proposing to improve this property and retain it as a neighborhood green space for
Yeah, they haven't really been using it because it's so wet, as Kyle points out.
Well
So the, the developer's gonna
Yes and no. I mean, it's, I I it depends on the summer. This past summer, it was, it was easy to use. Um in in prior summers, it was underwater. Depends on the summer.
Well, it, I'm confused here. They bought it, but the developer's planning on
No, 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 no. The developer always owned this, always retained it.
That versus that.
Yeah, this, this was given to the town and then sold back to the, to the, these uh neighbors. And this was given to the town and the town held on to it. Anyways, thirty-seven homes, seventy-four hundred square feet is what your regs would require. This space on Lot One is eighty thousand square feet. It's, it's a, I mean, one point eight five acres.
Right.
However, none of it was improved. Your regs require that it be improved with paths and benches and various other things. So clearly, this project easily could have complied with these regulations and went well beyond the acreage, but they didn't actually create the space. Which is interesting, given that there's some of us have been talking about, why hasn't, why hasn't there been a nice space created here?
And why on earth did the select board turn that down when Grabowski offered to to improve Lot One?
It's complicated, Maggie, but um it was, it was part of um this Phase Two project. Uh the developer needed density bonuses to get the, to the me- the number of units he wanted and there are many ways you can gain density bonuses. One of them is to provide a public facility. So I recommended that to him. He said, well, how about that tot lot? Mike Boucher, who was working for the developer, drew up a plan and had cost estimates and playground structure, you know, typicals and um I, I, I think the select board was uncomfortable with that arrangement to begin with, even though it was in the regs. And I'm not sure that they were comfortable that the, that the conceptual plan for Lot One was fully vetted and and was in fact the way the community wanted to see it developed and so those are some of the reasons why they said no. The DRB was actually amendable, is at least my recollection was, but they needed to hear a yes from the select board and the select board wasn't. In any case, my short answer is um thirty-seven homes uh easily could have met the requirements that you're considering. In fact, went well beyond that in terms of pure acreage. If we move to the north a little bit, to the next phase of this project, cause really this this uh neighborhood was just the first phase of what are multiple phases of an overall part, Lyman parcel. Uh Heinsberg Center, Phase One as it's called, with Kenny Drugs and the Bristol Bakery and D Physical Therapy. Uh that project uh is eighteen homes, twenty thousand square feet of commercial space. So per the proposed regulations, it would have to have uh thirty-six hundred square feet of public open space for the homes uh or calculated from the homes, three thousand square feet from the commercial space, so sixty-six hundred square feet total. How much did it actually provide? Um it provided a a pocket park that we've, we've talked an awful lot about in here. But to be, to be clear, regardless of what we've said about it or what you think of it, it is a developed public open space. It has benches, it has tables, it has plantings, it has pathways, it has all those things. Obviously, it's got some issues, but
Yeah, we gotta stop bad mathing it.
But uh in any case, that space is uh approximately five thousand square feet. And he created another one here in front of the Blue Cottage Building, which is approximately twenty-eight hundred square feet. So in total, that project uh produced seventy uh seventy-eight hundred square feet of improved public open space. It was only required under our, these new regs. It would only have been required to do sixty-six hundred square feet.
So, so, so the mess- the message you're saying is, is we're we're, we're maybe undersizing things in the new regulation.
Maybe, maybe. I think it's also important to note that, again, these two projects were done by the same developer on the same original parcel. Um to some extent, the developer's made the argument, and I don't think he's wrong, that that Lot One should sort of be credited to all of this. It's, it's a central organizing feature of this whole project. Um but yes, Joe, that's part of the message, but let's move on. Thistle Hill is another one that's recent and fairly easy to calculate. Um so Thistle Hill is a thirty-six home development. Originally intended to be larger, but this portion got redesigned and um the multifamily structures that were supposed to be there got turned into single-family homes. So thirty-six homes, if you apply the two hundred square feet per home, that's uh seventy-two hundred square feet of of developed public open space. What did this project actually provide? Um in terms of um park-like or, you know, flat space to put benches and playgrounds, zero.
Zero.
Um but it did provide very substantial trails uh that connect to the Russell Trails that everyone was lauding before. So um if you look at the trails, there are about forty-three hundred linear feet of trails that were created. Um and if we, uh these proposed regs allow you to calculate a twenty-foot width for, you know, right-of-way and that sort of thing, so that's eighty-five thousand square feet of public open space that was created. The regs say that uh when it's a trail, it can, only thirty percent of it can count towards, or sorry, that's not the right way to put it. Only thirty percent of your required open space can come from trails. So this project would have had a required open space of seventy-two hundred square feet. Um that means about two thousand square feet of that could have come from the trails. It would have had to provide another five thousand square feet of public open space. It, it didn't. Um so this, this is a project that would have been, would have had to have been designed a bit differently.
Those two developments should have playground areas.
You think? They're big enough for that?
So what, what defines?
There's no flat, much of us flat.
Well, there's a, there is a small flat spot. We've walked up there. There's kind of an overlooked view.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's right up there. Yeah, right in there.
And what's it like in there?
It's actually a nice little area. I think the community was using it. I I kinda remember some benches or adderall neck chairs there and maybe a fire pit.
That was the intention when the DRB approved it. I mean, I walk up there and think it's kind of a useless space, but um
But if it were a destination with
If it were, if more improvements were there so that it felt like a space you were supposed to be in and had, had a reason to be there. I, I will note though, well, you just walked down this road.
That, it's a road.
Yeah, I will note though that this project, in addition to the trails, um has four, more than fourteen acres of private open space in this, in the sense of all this woodland back here. So these folks benefit from the ability to go run around off trail. The public doesn't though. That's not open to the public. It's only the trails that meander through there.
That can never be developed.
Right. So anyways, Thistle Hill is an example of a project that would have had to have done more, been redesigned in some way.
What is that odd little triangle there at the top middle?
Right here?
Yeah, that hole.
Ravine.
So that is, um that's actually a piece of the original Mulberry Lane development.
Is that French Hill?
And, and this, I believe, was uh open space that was part of this um original six-lot subdivision. Um and so it's really just
It's not part of Thistle.
It's not. And um although you could say that Thistle Hill and Mulberry Lane are really just two phases of of an overall development plan. It was the same developer, um or at least in part was the same developer. It's just that this, this six-lot subdivision came first and then this came later.
Does Jeff live on Mulberry Lane?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yep, hence the French Hill comment.
Very different, I think, than the Thistle Hill houses. They're bigger. Even though they're built by the same developer.
Well, actually, I, I say same developer.
Right, I know.
Russ Peroni did this project. Russ Peroni and Bart Frisbee did this, but Bart Frisbee bought out Russ later in the process and and did most of the building.
They're quite different.
Anyways, that's Thistle Hill. Lyman Meadows is another one that's good to look at. Um so here it is. And uh Lyman Meadows is uh eighty homes here. Very dense, you know, it's one of our densest developments. And um per the proposed regulations, two hundred square feet again per do- per home, so sixteen thousand square feet of public uh improved open space. How much did this project actually provide? Well, my understanding, I wasn't here at the time, is that Lyman Park was part and parcel of this, this development. Lyman Park is um hundred and forty thousand square feet. It's, it's three point two acres. Um
That's public, isn't it?
And that's public. Yeah, it's available to the public. In addition to that, this project created private open spaces, again, not open to the public, but you know, just good to note, there's about an acre in here where they have, there's some community gardens for the neighborhood and then just a walking path and green space. And then there's about another acre in here, which is just totally underutilized lawn that somebody spends money mowing and I never, I mean, I shouldn't say that. I don't live there, but every, I do walk around there. I never see anybody on it. It's just sort of buffer, I guess, to the park and, yeah. It's just sort of buffer, I guess, to the park and, yeah. In any case, the upshot is, this project, not unlike the Creekside project, created vastly more public open space than what these new regulations would require. Uh, let's see, what is the next one? Green Street, I think we talked about Green Street already and, and, um, maybe I'll bring up the Google map just so it's a little easier to see what's there.
Part of this is different zoning, different districts and different, you know, time periods where they were developed and.
Oh, sure. And it's not so much a, a good tool to think about what was done back then. It's a tool to say, if that project were done today, how would these proposed regulations, uh, play into it?
I mean, it, it, it does provide some perspective and some concern about language and is it really, you know, is the intent here really what we want or is it the opposite of, you know?
Alex, can I just ask a quick question while you're looking through there about commercial development? You said that at, uh, um, Heinsberg Center, there was twenty thousand square feet of commercial development.
Right.
And is, my recollection, what's proposed for Haystack is fifty thousand?
Correct.
So that's not very much commercial development for the amount of space that it is compared to what Heinsberg Center is.
Correct.
I just wanna say that.
Correct, and if you look across the street at the Village Northeast District, where Jan, Jan Blumstrom's project is, they're proposing like a hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
And it's smaller.
Of non-residential space, of, you know, light industry, office, all of that.
Okay.
Um, and that's also smaller than the, you know, development footprint of the Black Rock Project. Different, different districts.
I was gonna say, the, the intent of those two districts was very different.
Yeah.
Sure.
Right.
Yep, so Green Street is, um, twenty, it was twenty-seven new homes. There's also the five-unit apartment building that's technically part of the project up on one sixteen, but if you exclude that, just look at what, what was new. Twenty s-, uh, twenty-seven new homes. It did have a proposed commercial building here that never got built, uh, for about six thousand square feet. So if you include that, that's, uh, the, the formula in the proposed regs would require s- seven thousand four hundred square feet of, of public open space. Um, and a- again, this project, not unlike, um, Thistle Hill, didn't create any, but does have a sidewalk connection from the project through the middle of these properties up to one sixteen that I think would count as a trail pathway and that, um, if you apply the thirty percent rule to the required seventy-four hundred, uh, that could account for as much as two thousand two hundred square feet. Require, uh, the regs would have required seventy-four hundred, it still would have been five thousand short. So similar to Thistle Hill, this project would have needed to have been either redesigned or some additional developed public open space would have had to have been created somewhere in the project.
That's all affordable housing, isn't it?
Uh, most of it is. The, there are four market rate.
Houses here, but the rest were.
Yeah.
It's, see, it's nice, uh, my personal opinion, it's nice, but it's very tight in there.
Sure is, yeah.
Very, very tight.
There were, there were a lot of constraints with this property because of the flood hazard zone and wetlands. And that's why it's all snugged right up here and doesn't sprawl out into this area here. So, uh, we talked about this in another meeting. My opinion is that, could they have gotten the same number of units under these proposed regulations? Maybe, but it would have required, um, more multi-story, you know, uh, units above each other. They have just a couple of those in here, uh, but more than likely, it, they would have dropped a unit or two.
Right.
Um, and, and in order to create a, a more, uh, a larger open space.
Yep.
Message I get here is, we, we need to consider things a little bit more.
I'd also ask this question.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, it's clear, say, for example, with, um, co- um, fit, not, not Thistle Hill, but what's the first one we looked at?
Mulberry Lane.
Creekside?
Creekside.
Oh, Creekside.
Uh, where suddenly, um, you know, and how it came about, I'm not sure, but there's a, a, a substantial expanse of public land and it's clearly identifiable as public land, even in the way that it's shaped, say, for example. Same's true with, um, uh.
Lyman Park?
Lyman Park.
Yep.
Right.
How is public versus private defined? And because even if you look at Lyman Meadows, say, for example, that U-shaped area to the south, it is gardens, um. Is there a formal designation that says in whatever the, the zoning approvals and so forth that says, hey, this is a portion of this project that is accessible to anybody? And these areas are private and they are open space, but they are not, uh, publicly accessible to anyone?
So it's a good question, Ralph, I think that the way these regs were written, it would allow for, um, private spaces to serve as public open space if the public were invited in and allowed. And in fact, Heinsberg Center is the example of that, that much maligned little pocket park, the two of them in there. But those aren't town properties, but they are accessible to the public.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Lyman Meadows, I don't think is that way. I, I walk through that little connector, which is actually right in here from time to time. And I, I don't, I never think that the resident, somebody's gonna look out their window and say, get off my lot, you know, but, but I wouldn't think to like lay out a blanket or go, you know, plant some sunflowers or, or go, go plant something in their community garden. I think that is, in fact, private property that is meant to be private.
Yeah, I, I think in, in, in both the case of, of Lyman Meadows and in the case of Creekside, right, the, the public land is, is differentiated by lot lines, it's a separate lot. And, you know, in, in, in the case of Lyman Meadows, you, you have a condominium and, you know, by definition, right, condominium is, is, you know, multiple housing units on a single parcel of land. Right, so that, that parcel belongs to, you know.
All of them.
All, all of them, right, it's privately held.
Yep.
So, and, and yeah, we, you know, as, you know, as rural Vermont residents and we try and be friendly, we generally don't start screaming at people that walk across our property.
But don't abuse it.
Most of us don't, um, so.
I think that might be worth a little bit of a conversation because I think some spaces, by their very nature, the way in which they're organized, the way they position themselves, become very private spaces, even if they're, say, designated as public. And the converse is true as well, I mean, um, there are some potentially private spaces that by the way in which they're arranged, they're, they're very public. Um, and I, I think, uh, for us to discuss the distinction between the two, because oftentimes, I think a lot of these open spaces are sort of, you know, dedicated to a neighborhood. You know?
Right.
And that's their import, really. It's not so much that anybody in town could walk there, yeah, sure, fine. But the real import is, you know, those people that live in a particular development, that they have the elbow room, um, with which to stretch and, and feel more comfortable amongst one another.
I have to, I, you know, I hate, hate to have to say this, but, I mean, this is something that needs to be continued next meeting one because, you know, I, I think we need a much more in-depth structure and we need to consider how this regulation really works, uh, and whether we're actually doing a detriment to the town. Um, too, because it's getting late, we have three more items we, we should be covering tonight. So I, I'd ask that we move on to minutes of, uh, November twenty-eighth.
I can summarize that one too for next time.
Does anyone have any comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around.
Thank you.
Thank you all for here.
Bye.
Bye.
See ya. Thanks for coming. I move we approve the minutes?
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
Upstein.
Upstein.
Anyone wanna vote, vote with a majority and leave with abstention?
What do you mean, there are twenty-two pages there. When you got a smaller group, it really goes fast.
All right, um, move on to other business. Um, I asked Alex to put both of these things on, so, uh, I'll take it from here, Alex, unless you have anything else?
Um, I did have that one, um, Public Utility Commission application that came in that I emailed you all about that I just wanted to make you aware of.
Yep.
Uh, you want me to do that now?
Sure.
So, you talked about it a while ago, you probably remember it. It was the battery storage facility that was proposed next to the Vermont Electric Co-op Substation, Pond Brook, Richmond Road intersection. So you commented on it, told them, do some landscaping and put together an erosion control plan cause it looks like you're gonna eat into this slope. Um, they did, they did both. There's, there's landscaping proposed and they have an erosion control plan and, and they, it's nice. The way this process works is, you get an advance notice, you make comments, they include those comments in their formal application to the PUC. So the PUC sees what you said, sees how their response to what you said and, I don't know, it seems to work well in our, for our town. Other towns have had issues, but, um, in any case, I have the full application, if you wanna look at it. Um, it's, some of it, important parts are on your, are on the Dropbox, but in my estimation, I think they address the concerns that you raised. So, um, I don't think you need to comment further, but that's up to you.
Right.
I will let you know that, um, I, uh, we didn't, I didn't talk to the fire chief last time around, didn't know that I should. When I read it this time, realizing, they give you all the specifications now for the lithium ion battery banks and the containment systems and then my first thought was like, wow, I bet you Al's gonna wanna know about this thing if it blows up or, you know, and they have to go put out a fire there. So I did alert Al, I don't know if he has any issues, hopefully not, but, uh, anyways.
Okay, thanks, so.
It is a very steep hill.
Right.
It was indicated that it was a, a moderate hill and it's not moderate.
Behind the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's steep, I've walked.
Yeah, so they're mostly at the bottom of it, they are gonna have, they are gonna eat into it a little bit and they've got, you know, control, erosion control proposed to deal with that.
So next item of the business, um, several meetings ago, um, we, uh, we had a visitor to talk about the Conservation Commission and, and a mapping effort, um, that they, they wanted our input on and support. Uh, since that time, Kate Kelly has, has contacted me, asked for a letter of support. Um, I was originally gonna write that letter as, uh, a personal letter, not as Chair of the Planning Commission. Um, however, uh, before I did that, I wanted to bring it back before the board. If the board decides that they wanna, they wanna write the letter as a board, we can do that. Um, if not, um, it would be a personal letter from me, not, um, not from the Planning Commission. I think, uh, I don't get to, I don't get to speak with the planning, for the Planning Commission without taking it before the board.
Can I ask, Kate, I, I assume it, would it be more, um, more advantageous to have the commission?
I would assume it would be helpful to have the planning commission's part, but that's, that's sort of our, our goal, I guess, is to get as much support as we can.
What is it that you're mapping?
Uh, natural resources, so we're starting with sort of an initial inventory of, like, what data sources are out there right now that may not be included on state maps.
For the town as a whole?
For the town, correct, yeah, getting those compiled and then hopefully in the future, branching out to include some sort of boots on the ground of, like, targeted areas where, you know, maybe haven't been surveyed before. The infernal pools.
Yeah, I, I think that would be such an enormously helpful tool for us and for the DRB that.
I think, I think it fits well with our, you know, primary and secondary resources descriptions in, in the zoning.
Did you feel that it wasn't appropriate for you? I mean, if, if we say yes, would you do it for the whole board?
Yes, that's, that's the point of bringing it before the board.
Gotcha.
I would, I would not sign as Chair of the Planning Commission unless the board approved.
Well, it seems appropriate to me.
Me too.
Okay, all right, so I'll take that as approval and I'll go forward. Uh, next agenda item, um, I asked Alex to put this on. I think it's been a very long time since we've had elections for Chair and, and Vice Chair for the board. Um, and as you know, I have served, uh, as Chair since Jean Isham left. And, uh, this year has not been the most kind to me and I, I've been reassessing some things. And, um, I've served with the town, uh, over twenty years now and perhaps it's time that I give up my seat, um, when the next time comes to, to, you know, you, you know, for the select board to, to re- either reappoint me or, or pick someone else. Uh, that's a year from now. Um, I am not a hundred percent certain that I'm gonna do that, but I'm ninety-nine point nine percent certain I'm gonna do that. Um, I think that it, maybe it's, it's time for some fresh blood. Um, that being the case, I'd like to follow the, the Isham model of succession. Um, a year or so before Jean left the board, um, she stepped down as Chair. Uh, and, um, had me take, take the chair while she was Vice Chair. Um, I think that or something like that, when I'm still on the board as a member, um, but not Chair, would be a good thing. Uh, so I asked Alex to put, um, put elections on for, for January and, um, Alex felt it would be a good idea to give the rest of the board some time to consider, um, um, what I'm asking for and, and maybe who would be Chair, and, uh, that's why I'm bringing it to you tonight. Simple message and, you know.
Be ready to nominate somebody else for Chair on January ninth, that's the message.
Are there really just two quote formal positions on this board?
Yeah, because we have the great services of Kate as a recording secretary, we don't really need a secretary. We just need some, a Chair and a Vice Chair, somebody to run the meeting and somebody to run the meeting in the absence of the person who's supposed to run the meeting.
Okay, all right. Well, Joe, um.
You're not rid of me yet.
Not quite, but, uh, what you, uh, state seems, you know, appropriate and, um, you know, I'm sure I speak for everybody. I, it's not idle flattery, you, you do a great job.
Thank you.
We'll miss your, uh, measured nature.
You'll, you'll do a great job too.
Yeah, we shall see, but, uh.
So your knowledge, oh goodness.
Especially your explanations to the public.
Yes, oh my goodness, yes, we're excellent.
Oh, they're all, I mean, they're always excellent.
You, you do have a, you do have a knack, Joe, for, for not being afraid to clarify and comment on comments that are being received. Uh, not every Chair does that and it can definitely blow up in your face if you don't do it the right way, right? If somebody feels like they're not being heard because you're talking at them when they're, when they thought they were here to talk to you.
Yep.
So you're good at that.
Yes, thank you.
And you do it sort of out of the gate, which is
Right.
really helpful in a way, as Alex says, that's, it's good.
But I, yeah.
I've learned about not being listened to and I don't like it, so it's important.
Okay.
So, that's, that, that, that's not a thing before this board or, or the town, that's the thing about my workplace, so, so, yeah, just to clarify.
Yeah, we know.
It's been one of them weeks. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved?
All right.